Here, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Albemarle County Public School Board to order. We'll start off with the closed-meeting certification.
I move that the board certified by recorded vote to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open-meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorizing the closed-meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed-meeting.
Second.
Ms. Thompson, can we get a roll call, a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro is absent. Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
And Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Next up will be, we have two motions coming out of that meeting. First motion will be Dr. Acuff.
I move that we accept the recommendations from HR about the appointment of four elementary school principals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one other motion coming out of that meeting, Dr. Berlin.
I move that the school board approve the superintendent's recommendation to revoke the teaching license of employee A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to the roll call. Before we do that, I just, we have a substitute student rep, so we have not had the chance to meet him. If he's in the audience, though. Yes.
Who is it?
Awesome. Come on, your seat's up here. It's all right. Awesome. So with that, we will do a roll call. We'll start with Mr. Holden and make our way around.
Ross Holden, school board attorney.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Valentine Dowd, student representative.
Matthew Haas, superintendent.
Christine Thompson, clerk to the board.
Thank you. That brings us to item 2.4, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Next up, we'll observe, excuse me, a moment of silence. And then from that, for anyone who's curious, I always make those 30 seconds. I don't know if anyone's ever wondering, like, how long are we doing this for? 30 seconds is the answer. Next up will be approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve tonight's agenda. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, after that, will be item 4.0, approval of the consent agenda.
I move we approve tonight's consent agenda.
The second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Page. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That brings us to our announcements, and we have, I was going to say Valentin, but Mr. Dowd, is that, is that the correct? Mr. Dowd. We have Mr. Dowd here to do our spotlight on education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is National School Wars is Week, a time to celebrate and thank professionals who work tirelessly with students, their families, and staff to ensure their health and well-being, and to be on call, ready, and often the first responder in a time of crisis. It was during the Roosevelt administration that the position of the school nurse was established. No, not that Roosevelt, I mean Theodore Roosevelt. School nurses have been protecting lives for more than 100 years, and this special week of recognition has been in place for more than 50 of those years. In a few minutes, we're going to hear how our nurses exemplify the theme of this year's special week. Nurses make a difference anytime, anywhere, always. It's important to note that our students, staff, and families were spared the worst of the pandemic. Outbreaks were relatively few and modest in their scope, thanks to the heroes on the front line. Our school nurses provided masks, comforted children, talked with parents of the importance of quarantining when symptoms were present, and they volunteered to help provide immunizations during community clinics. It worked. The full story of our school nurses is told, however, not in one chapter, but in many pages of a very substantial book. Some of those pages contain the name Eileen Gomez. She was honored on the state level for her groundwork in getting inhalers into school. She was the lead in our division in coordinating the services of our nurse throughout COVID, and for the longtime support she provides to our school health advisory board, for her close partnership with the medical community, and most recently, for her leadership in the addition of the Narcan dispensers in our schools. Ms. Gomez herself served for more than 25 years as a school nurse at Hollymead, and to borrow a phrase from an investment firm's very old commercial, "When Eileen Gomez speaks, everyone listens." With Ms. Gomez this evening is one of our school nurses who was selected as her school's Classified Staff Member of the Year. I'd like to ask Ms. Gomez to join us at the podium and to share some of the highlights of the invaluable contributions school nurses make every day of the school year, and also to introduce her special guest, who will share a few words with us about their experiences. Ms. Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. Dow. I'm not so sure about that "everybody listens" part of it, but that was a lovely tribute. Thank you. It is my honor and privilege to speak about our school nurse program with you this evening. As you may know, we now have school nurses in all of our schools. School nurse offices are busy places. Last year, there were over 66,000 visits, for an average of about 550 visits a day across the division. School nurses treat a number of different conditions on a daily basis, from minor illnesses and injuries to more serious and sometimes even life-threatening conditions and events. We have a number of students, well over 2,000, with chronic health conditions such as asthma, severe allergies, diabetes, seizure disorders, to name a few, and our nurses are often involved in their daily care, so these students can be safe, comfortable, and ready to learn at school. An important responsibility of our school nurses, as Mr. Dow mentioned, is the management of infectious illnesses, and never was that truer than during the COVID pandemic. They worked tirelessly to manage our COVID mitigation strategies, and I believe the division, whether the public health emergency, as well as it did, thanks to their efforts. Most of our nurses joined the Medical Reserve Corps through the Virginia Department of Health and became either COVID vaccinators or post-vaccine monitors, and you may have seen us, if you've participated in any of those clinics, it was actually pretty fun for us to join together and carry that out. In addition to the daily management of students and staff presenting with symptoms and reporting positive test results, they served as valuable resources to our families and our employees. As Mr. Dow also mentioned, Albemarle County has led the state in several school health initiatives, including our instrumental role in getting undesignated albuterol inhalers in all the schools across the state. We also have AEDs in every school building, and we crafted an athletic heat and cold policy before either the AEDs or the cold and heat policy became required by law. Furthermore, as he mentioned, all the nurses have been trained in the use of Narcan for opioid overdoses, and we participated in the Stop the Bleed training to be prepared for significant bleeding events. I am proud to work with this group of hard-working, dedicated healthcare professionals. As he also mentioned, two of our nurses were named Classified Employees of the Year, Emily Sims at Baker Butler and Carol Jansen at Albemarle High School, who unfortunately could not be with us this evening. These two nurses work at our busiest school nurse offices. They're really astonishing. If you ever want to see some amazing work, you visit them. Twelve other of our nurses were nominated for the We Notice Awards by students or their families. They are Steve Floyd of Agna Hurt, Dorothy Trotta, Rottus Wood, Kristy Canty, Croze Elementary, Ashley Wright, Hollymead, Lisa Bittner, Merriweather Lewis, BJ Fortune, Mountain View, Karen Grenadier, Murray, Vivian Fuel, Scottsville, Tanya Floyd, Stone Robinson, Daniella Martin, Walton, Chris Stutzman, Albemarle, and Terri Tomlin at Monticello. Thank you for joining me in honoring this group of dedicated, hardworking professionals. Emily, would you like to say a few words about your role as a school nurse at Baker Butler?
My name is Emily Sims. I've been at Baker Butler for about three years, but I've been in the county as a school nurse for about five years. I was asked to speak about possibly what my favorite and most important part of my day is. I would say it's about making a connection with the kids, knowing that you are there for them from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, just being there, and also making sure they're healthy so they can learn as best as they can. So.
Do we have any questions?
I don't have a question, but Nurse Gomez was our nurse when our son had extreme allergies, and we felt so confident with him being in the school because of you, so I just wanted to thank you and all the nurses.
I just want to say that when I first came on the school board, this is the beginning of my 10th year, school nurses were not full-time in elementary schools, and that was one change that I was very supportive of. And I don't know what we would have done with COVID if we didn't have that kind of coverage in our schools. And I think it's also, it needs to be pointed out that for many of our students, this is the primary caretakers, a primary access to the healthcare system. And so I deeply thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
I know, Kate, and a lot of you have been champions of the school nurse program. We greatly appreciate that.
I would want to add on, I'm sure I could extend, extend thanks to all of our school nurses, but I want to make sure to call out both of you. Ms. Gomez, leading us through the pandemic and having to give us consistent updates and let us know and keep us up to date with what's happening was invaluable, so thank you. And then I have to also say thank you to Mr. Floyd, who I actually speak to probably more than my kids' classroom teachers, because I probably have a frequent flyer to the nurse's office. So I get a call from him probably every other week, and he is a pleasure to talk to, and I feel like my son is in great hands with them, and you all do a wonderful job. It is shocking to me to think that we ever had elementary schools not have full-time nurses, because I feel like they get, they get a lot of action in elementary school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more, one more thing, sorry to bug you again. I know that you also work with our mental health providers and counselors, and you're part of that team. I don't know if you want to add anything about that work?
I would say that I work hand-in-hand with my school counselors. We have three at Baker Butler, just because we're so large, and therefore, I do, if I need to be the first person that the kids come and see, I am available for them all the time in case the counselors are not there for them.
Thank you.
I was going to add that the, I don't know if you've been watching the COVID numbers, but they are much better than they were when I was speaking to you periodically, very, very much, but both in our school and in our health district.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you so much. If you, we, I would love to shake your hand, so if you want to come around, we'll shake your hands, say thank you.
Even without sanitizers. You all make learning possible in our schools.
I know, I'm really behind.
You've been a pitch hitter this past few years, haven't you? You've done a lot.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Remember now, I work for you. I mean, I always work for you, especially tonight, if you need a water or a drink. Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to the next topic on our agenda, which is going to be school board and superintendent business. Does anyone have any business they would like to share? Mr., I mean, Dr. Haas?
Sure. So first, I do want to echo everything I heard the board say with regard to our school nurses. When I first came to the central office, I had the delight of working. They were, they were one of my areas of responsibility. So I really got to know Eileen. She had, her daughter Laura was a student at Albemarle High School for four years while I was there, and she was also on the state volleyball championship team, and she's a teacher now in the school system. So I learn something new every time I talk to Eileen, and I want to say that the health implications for our students are powerful, and not to take away from that, but the role of the school nurses really increases our students' success academically, that we have a mission to close achievement gaps, and as you, as many of you pointed out, or Dr. Acuff pointed out, for many of our students, their primary care, their reason for coming to school is to get, is to get treated by the nurse, and oftentimes, when the nurse treats them, they're able to come back. And our, the pandemic numbers for COVID are down, but Dr. McLaughlin was letting us know the other day that our attendance numbers are just a half a percent away now from where they had routinely been prior to the pandemic. And we have our, we have a lot of people to thank for that, particularly students coming to school, but also really, the fact that the nurses are there day in and day out treating students and helping them, helps them be academically successful and helps us achieve our mission. I also want to point out, we do have three principals here with us tonight. Art Stowe is here from Scottsville, Jen Sublett from Western, and Dara Bonham from Albemarle. I did do a walk of Albemarle on Monday with Mr. Bonham, had a lot of fun, a lot of great classes going on, teachers doing a super job. And the one thing I'll say is that it's an enormous school, all over the place, Dara seemed to know everybody's name, and maybe it was just frequent flyers that you see all the time. But the other part is, no students were surprised at all to see him in the classroom and sitting down with them, looking at their work, and talking to them about what they were doing. But there are some times where I'll go to schools and students will say, "What are you doing in here?" to the principal. None of them said that to Dara. They fully expect his presence, because I believe he is everywhere, all the time at the school. So, thank you, Dara, for having me. It was a great visit. I really, I really appreciate it. If you don't have plans yet for the weekend, Cry Baby, the musical, started last night at Monticello. I saw the preview for it today, the video. It's, it looks like a lot of fun. And also, Little Women, the musical, is playing next weekend at Albemarle, at Albemarle High School, correct? And Matilda was running a couple weeks ago at Western. That was a lot of fun. That was a great play. The kids did a great job with it. And there are two proms tomorrow night. Albemarle High School, not tomorrow night, Saturday night, Albemarle High School and Western at the Ick's Art Park and on, at the pavilion. So if you happen to be in the area, want to swing by and see what the kids are up to, and also just kind of send out your thoughts. We have safe, safe travels. Monticello had their prom two weeks ago, and everything was great. I went by for about an hour, and the kids were great. So I don't have any other announcements, do I, cabinet? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for those updates, Dr. Haas. Do we have any board members who would like to share business? Okay. That brings us to our next agenda item, item 8.0, public comment. Mrs. Lee will be leading public comment today.
Thank you, Chair Carlson. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts the meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with a clerk. Sign-up is available online beginning at 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol: State name and address or voting district; address comments to the school board as a whole; limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations; give written statements and/or and other supporting material to the clerk. If you're unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A color-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker has one minute left, and the red light means the speaker must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. Debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed. Use of the projection system is reserved for staff-scheduled agenda item presentations only. Tonight, we have two speakers. We have Phoebe Rebhorn and Tori Sommer. So, Phoebe? Just one second. Do you see a light system there?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Hi, I'm Phoebe Rebhorn.
I'm Gabby McCollin.
And I'm Karina Arbaugh. We're from Monticello High School, which is in the Scottsville District, and we're here to talk with you today about SOL testing for non-English-speaking students in Albemarle County public schools.
In Virginia schools today, according to a study done from 2016 to 2017 by the Migration Policy Institute, there is a disparity between the performance of ESOL students and other students on standardized tests. They reported, for example, that on the World Geography SOL, the percent of EL's passing was 49%, while the percent of all students passing was 83%. Or, in the Biology SOL, the comparison was 53% to 82%. And this isn't confined to just these topics. It exists across all standards and grade levels, but especially in high school. This disparity could be decreased by offering SOLs in other languages, particularly Spanish. We have testimony from multiple experts who have roles in SOL testing, who say that this could drastically improve ESOL student scores and foster a more inclusive environment. We understand that this decision is not up to the ACPS school board and that the VDOE would have to pass legislation to make this change, but we want to appeal to the school board in any sway they may have.
While this task may seem daunting, we learned that it's actually much more feasible than we had anticipated. We have the resources to hire translators to write these tests in different languages, which could then be used in variation for many years to come, and therefore, we would just need the legal ability to fund this change, and we would not be alone in this endeavor. States like Hawaii, Michigan, New York, and Washington have also begun offering standardized testing in other languages, and they have seen vast improvements.
And a very important factor, remember, is that the content of SOLs are not significantly changed, excluding grammar and reading between languages. Students' learning abilities are reflected in their proficiency in a topic, not their ability to read the question itself. Therefore, this change simply gives students the opportunity to really focus on the content of the test and not devote all of their time and energy to just understanding the question. And while they should still be practicing and understanding English, the place to test that proficiency is not on a standard that determines graduation. Learning English doesn't happen overnight, and the ACPS should accommodate for the unique situations of students.
But more than that, this is about students and their success. ACPS schools are diverse places that promote a welcoming and inclusive environment, but when students are held back, not by their level of knowledge, but a language barrier outside of their control, divisions within the community form. We want every student to feel that they can perform their best every day, and having those test scores and therefore graduation requirements reflect that hard work.
We understand this isn't fully in your control, but we hope you can all be an advocate for this change within our school community. You all, like us, care about all of our peers, and we want to see each succeed and grow without barriers in their way.
Thank you all so much for your time, and please feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Good job. Next, we have Tori Sommer.
Good evening, Dr. Haas, and members of the ACPS school board. My name is Tori Sommer, mom of four in the Whitehall District and teacher to many in the Scottsville District. I am back one last time for one simple favor. Make it make sense. Yes, I am talking about moving all eighth-grade math and ELA classes to every other day, and seventh-grade algebra as well. I have sent you an email tonight, an open letter, that has over 60 parents and teachers across the county signed it. And yes, I have the data to back that up. Be sure to check your emails and check that out. Speaking of data, ACPS has stated that they always follow the data. Dr. Haas has shared that data at a parent council meeting, and Debbie Collins has shared that same data with teachers at the March DPLC. I do wonder if anyone has actually read the data that was shared. I did. Let me quote it for you. "The data analysis indicated that seventh-grade students who received 90 minutes of mathematics instruction daily had a statistically significantly higher growth in their test scale score than seventh-grade students who received 90 minutes of mathematics instruction every other day. Additionally, these results are supported by the NCTN 2014 findings that increased time allowed for increased student-teacher interaction to deepen knowledge of mathematical concepts with more time to practice and fully engage in the material. The study later summarizes that there was no significant difference between the two groups of eighth-graders, but reading the details will show you that there was a small positive difference for eighth graders taking math every day. If ACPS follows the research, please tell me why seventh graders are taking algebra every other day when the research clearly does not support that. Why are eighth-grade algebra and geometry every other day? Why are we changing Math 8? The data supplied by our own superintendent does not support this decision, and I need you to make it make sense. If data and research are not enough, let's read some words from Jay Thomas regarding the high school schedule. This quote comes from The Division Compass. Through climate surveys, it's clear that our comprehensive high school environments are not as conducive to learning as they could be. We also know that our high school students have not performed as well on their SOL test since the transition to an eight-period day back in 2010. And perhaps most importantly, we recognize that rapid shifts in our student demographics demand greater focus on knowing each individual student. That is saying that we need time to build relationships, not less time. If eight classes on an every-other-day schedule is not successful at the high school, why are we imposing this on middle schoolers? Again, I say, make it make sense. Just because we are making a move to give every student the same middle school experience does not mean that this is the right experience to provide. Let us keep every-day ELA and math as an option. In the spirit of Teacher Appreciation Week, might I suggest a great way to show appreciation to your teachers is to talk with, listen to, and trust your teachers when they have concerns. Address those concerns by including them in the conversations before decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sommer. And I see it back to you, Chair Carlson.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lee? I can't not say it. I loved having the student speakers. Thank you. That's like my go-to. Anytime the students come and speak, I'm just so proud of you, and so thank you for taking the time to come and speak. Did you want to do public comment?
So, we kind of would like to speak as well. Is there open time to speak? Or?
So, the way that it would be done in the future is you have to sign up online, but we will have our next meeting. When is our next meeting?
25th.
May 25th.
May 25th. And I'm sorry that I can't make an exception right now. It just, we're trying to keep it equal for everyone, so thank you. That also helps explain, because I'm glad to know that you were here to make comment, because we, I was wondering why you were wearing life vests. So maybe we will find out next week. I'm very curious. Or you can catch us on the break and talk to us when we're out there. We're going to have a break in about 30 minutes. So that brings us to the next item, which is 9.0, school division business, and we will have a presentation on employee engagement, about 30 minutes, then we'll have the break, followed by then our transportation update, and then a community engagement update. So for employee engagement, I believe, are we going to have you presenting, Ms. Kaiser? Okay. Dan? Mr. Redding?
Excellent. All right. Where is my present? There it is. All right. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Haas. We are here this evening to talk with you about the 2023 Gallup Employee Engagement Survey. We have a lot of data to share. As always, we start with our vision and mission, and I believe employee engagement is embedded throughout our mission. and I believe employee engagement is embedded throughout our mission. We talk about working together as a team. The team comes together, that's engaged employees, determining what practices will work best for students. We build relationships with families and communities. All of that, knowing every student, speaks to highly engaged employees. Within our values and our strategic goals, engagement is also embedded, especially in Goal 3, Equitable and Transformative Resources. The key to retaining our employees is high levels of engagement. A few milestones in our journey and our partnership with Gallup related to the engagement survey. We first administered the Gallup survey in April of 2022 and presented that data to you in June of last year. Over the course of that summer, Human Resources worked with leaders throughout the division, principals, central office directors, to help them unpack the Gallup resources that support improving employee engagement. All schools and departments had to have an employee engagement goal in their improvement plan for this school year. Over the course of that year, the leaders have been implementing those strategies, and that led us to our second administration of the Gallup survey in March of 2023. Just earlier this week, the superintendent's cabinet got a high-level view of the data, and we also engaged with leaders across the division yesterday to start looking at school and department-level data. With us this evening is Mr. Stephen Shields. He is a senior consultant with Gallup, and he is going to help us unpack this data. I'm going to bring up his presentation. All right, Mr. Shields.
Thank you very much. So, it is such a privilege to be able to partner with you in this small way to create an even more inclusive and respectful environment for the purpose of the success of the students. And I'm happy to represent Gallup in helping you with this. By quantitatively measuring the quality of culture and the quality of leadership within the organization, you make it more likely for all of this to happen. There are a lot of numbers, but let me hasten to say we have advised every leader within the organization to take a very simple approach to operationalizing this data. Gallup has discovered over the years that organizations that are very modest in their effort, that take a very simple approach to action planning, actually get more done than those that do what I did when I was a Gallup client 18 years ago, which is to come up with boil-the-ocean action plans. So, we hope that you see within this data many, many opportunities for improvement. Last year, you were on a five-point scale. You were at a 3.73. And this year, you have moved up to a 3.76. Last year, you were at the 14th percentile in our K-12 database, and you have moved up to the 20th percentile. Keep in mind that when we percentile rank you and compare you to other districts and divisions, that we are comparing you with some districts and divisions who've been doing this for five, 10, 15, or 20 years. And this is only your second year with this particular survey. A meaningful improvement would be an improvement of .2. And based on your percentile ranking, we would like you next year to move up by .3... .4, sorry. We would like to see you move up by .4. One thing I want to bring your attention to on the left side of the graph is the fact that the participation rate has gone up precipitously from last year. Last year, 75% of employees responded, and you have moved that up to 81% of employees who have responded. At the bottom of the slide, you will see the engagement ratio. This is the ratio of engaged employees compared to actively disengaged employees. Earlier this evening, we heard about some of your very engaged employees who are nurses, who go, and this is the definition of engagement, above and beyond the call of duty in what they are doing. Sometimes, when people look at the number of not-engaged employees you have, they catastrophize that number. Let me assure you that if an employee is not engaged, they do every single thing within their job description. But what they don't do is what we heard tonight that some of your nurses do, is to go above and beyond the call of duty. That is what your engaged do. And right now, you have 33% of folks who are engaged and 53% of folks who are not engaged. The group to be most concerned about is the actively disengaged. And today, 14% of your employees are actively disengaged. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see the current ratio of 2.4 engaged employees to every one actively disengaged employee. When Gallup does statistical correlation analysis on such performance metrics as absenteeism, as turnover, as student grades, we find that it takes four engaged folks to make up for every one actively disengaged employee. And so, we would like to see you as soon as possible, and we believe that you could do this next year to a ratio of four engaged employees to every one actively disengaged instead of the current ratio of 2.4 to 1, which is an improvement from last year. And I do want to point out to you that one thing that we see in the data is that you had a multiplicity of schools that did improve meaningfully, and some that had even fantastic improvement in the level of culture that they have and also in the quality of leadership. The rest of this is covered by some of the other slides. I'm not going to go over all of this slide in detail. This is already covered. At the top, you see your level of engaged, not-engaged, and actively disengaged associates. At the bottom, you see the average percentage of engaged, not-engaged, and actively disengaged in Gallup's K-12 database. But again, let me hasten to mention some of those divisions and districts have been doing this for five, 10, 15 years, and you're only in your second year. But you're making good progress, and we think you have an opportunity to continue to grow. I believe that Tim shared these questions with you last year. I will only briefly mention that though we've been asking questions around these areas since 1935, about 30 years ago, we tested thousands of candidate questions with about a million people. And using a five-point scale, a Likert scale, we chose questions where high performers gave them fours and fives, and low performers gave them ones and twos. And every three to five years, we retest these questions to ensure that they still have a statistical correlation for the performance metrics that you are all very much concerned about, and legitimately. I mentioned that we use a Likert scale, a five-point scale, and I wanted to quickly review what these numbers mean. When you are looking for the emotions of a school or the emotions of a department or even of a particular team, you want to pay particular attention to the fives and the ones. You don't wake up in the morning in a good mood and give something a five. You give it a five because in your perception, it's good and it's been good. Analogously, you don't wake up on the wrong side of the bed one morning and give something a one. You give it a one because in your perception, it's bad and it's been bad. So, even though a survey is a snapshot in time of how people are feeling at that moment, your fives and your ones are a little bit of an exception, because they tend to link to persistent sources of engagement what people like and sources of disengagement what people don't like. A four is also a yes, but it's a yes with a mental reservation. It's a yes, but. A three is a nice no. A two is a solid no. And as I said earlier, a one is an angry no. And so, that's the scale that we use on all of these questions. This is a very busy slide, but I want to draw your attention to the fourth column from the right, because what I asked our analysts to do was to list each one of the 12 questions in descending percentile-ranked order. What that lets you do is to see where you are strongest at the top of the slide and where you are weakest at the bottom. I don't have time this evening to talk about all of these, but I do want to mention that one of your strengths is question number five, the full wording of which is, "My supervisor or someone at work seems to care about me as a person." And I want you to draw your attention to the percentage of fours and fives that you have on that particular question. 49% of your population gave that a five. And then, when we aggregate the fours and the fives, we see that 76% of your population gave that a yes. In my opinion, it's one of the best things about you, the relatively high collegiality between people leaders and their subordinates. It is a leverageable item as you work on some of your weaker items towards the bottom of the slide. One of those items I'm concerned about is question number eight, third from the bottom. "The mission and purpose of my organization makes me feel my job is important." On that particular item, we see that you're at the 15th percentile in Gallup's K-12 database. Now, we heard earlier this evening about people who absolutely get what their mission is within the organization. We want that tribe to increase. We want to see more and more people empowered by the mission to create a more inclusive environment so to make it more likely that students will succeed. And so, one thing we've suggested to your leaders is to leverage the relatively strong relationship that exists between people leaders and subordinates to have more dialogue, not just proclamation, but conversation about why are we doing this? What are you doing? If I filmed you doing this, what behaviors am I actually filming? Let's get very granular as we look at what people are doing to operationalize and to incarnate the mission of this organization. In my opinion, of all the graphs I'm showing you, this is the most important graph that we're looking at this evening. That connects to, when I speak about the power of dialogue, that connects to your first custom question you have here. There is open communication throughout all levels of my organization. Currently, only 13% of employees give that a five. The way that some of my clients in the 15 years I've been with Gallup have increased their scores on that question is to create more vertical, up and down the food chain of your organization, dialogue, not just monologue, but dialogue in both directions of what's working and what's not working within our organization. And that will drive the percentage of fives up, which is currently at the sixth percentile in our extra custom questions database. And I think that's the most important question of the three. I'm going to go ahead and move on and, for the sake of time, not talk about the other two questions. This is also a busy graph. I draw your attention to the second column from the right, which is the grand mean score for the superintendent's cabinet, the leaders, and the associates. Those are the three categories. And if you look on the left of the slide, you will see the delta in the grand mean score between the cabinet and the leaders, which is .51, and between leaders and associates, which is .32. A best-practice recommendation is that engagement is closer, within .2 instead of .3 and .5. We want a homogenous relationship, or rather, a homogenous culture all throughout the organization and not just at the top of your house. So, we do see an opportunity. Again, it underlines the importance of dialogue so that we can know what it is that we need to work on. This is also a busy graph. I would draw your attention to the last column. What the last column shows you on each one of these items is the difference between the engagement of teachers and the engagement of all other associates. And as you can see in the last column, the delta is precipitous when we compare those two groups. For example, the biggest difference is on praise and recognition, question number four. We see a .5 delta between teachers and all other associates. We would like to see that, much less, in fact. We'd like to see no difference whatsoever, that teachers, in addition to other associates, feel that when they do a great job, that that is also being recognized. You will not see a great difference amongst generations, except Generation Z. But because when you first get a new job, there's a six-month engagement honeymoon, I wouldn't necessarily get too excited that the Gen Zs, the oldest Gen Zs are now in their early 20s, are getting... have that much higher engagement, because they're going to have higher engagement when they first get a new job. We don't see a great difference amongst race. Look at the top line, which is the grand mean score. By the way, when you were reviewing this deck after tonight, a meaningful difference when you compare one group to another is a difference of .2 or more. That's how you can know if it's a meaningful difference. We do see that Asians do have a significantly higher engagement than other groups, but the other groups tend to be flatter when we look at their level of engagement. Before I invite your questions, I just want to say a word about operationalizing the survey results, because surveying will do nothing to change your culture. It's what we learn qualitatively from the numbers, of what people say about why some items are high and why some items are low. And we take action on those insights. That's when we truly, truly can create a more inclusive environment that is more conducive to student success. And this is the best news of the evening that I started out with. Gallup has discovered that less is literally more. Now, doing nothing is too little, but anything above nothing, you're actually going to get more done by coming up each people leader, each team, with one new behavior of something that they're going to do in the next two to four weeks. We have found that taking that simple view actually gets more done than coming up with boil-the-ocean action plans. I am proud of myself this evening, because I have left you an extra 17 seconds for questions. Questions on anything we've talked about or comments?
On the item analysis slide, there's... I don't know where... You probably know these really well.
Is it this slide?
Perfect. So, I'm just curious about the two questions. The one, "Do my best", which there was a kind of a slight .4 decline in, and then the progress, Q11, because that seemed to show the most significant increase.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Question number 11 of the five development questions on this page is the most tactical question. The specific wording of the question is, "In the last six months, someone has talked to me about my progress." And I should comment that I'm not going to five you if I work for you because you talked to me twice in the last year. I'm going to five you because you talked to me, and I thought it was a fantastic conversation. And to your point, if you look at the second column from the right, it is the only item that went up precipitously, or more specifically, that went up meaningfully. For an organization of over 1,000 people, a .1, and that's why it has the little triangle, the .13 is an increase. And an encouragement for me was that I learned yesterday that you put specific focus on the quality and quantity of those progress conversations within your system. And what this shows is that that did make a difference. And what this shows is that that did make a difference. And then the other development question you asked me about was question number three. The specific wording on that question is, "I have had an opportunity to do what I do best in my particular role." And on that particular item, let me find it, you went down, but not precipitously. That's not a meaningful decrease. We'd love to see it go up for a group of over a thousand by at least .1, but it did not go down. Did you have another question on that question?
No, the only other question I had is, Glenn, and it's just because I'm newer here, is when we say, when you say leaders on the superintendent's cabinet, leaders, associates, who is included in that leaders category?
I don't have an answer to that. Can you?
So, the superintendent's cabinet is the superintendent and assistant superintendents and chiefs. Leaders is defined or grouped as principals, assistant principals, directors, assistant directors, those who supervise others and lead programs, departments, and schools.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have learned to refer all very difficult questions to Dan. Thank you. Other question, yes?
So, early on, I think it was probably the first slide with numbers and charts and things?
This one?
That one, yes. So, you said that you would like to see us move up by .4. I'm guessing like 4.16, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I apologize. I should have said, I think I did say this right and then corrected it to the wrong number. .3 is what I want to see. I'd like to see you move up to a 4.06. The reason for that, there's two. One is that, so I'll be excited, and if I'm here a year from now, I'll say if you moved up by .1 to 3.86, that is a meaningful increase. The reason why we're putting some additional numbers on that is because of the percentile ranking, because currently, you're in the bottom quartile of our database. And so, we have quartile-specific recommendations, and it is achievable with the number of people you have. We would like to see you move up to a 4.06, but I would be happy if you moved up to a 3.86. And I apologize for the incorrect information earlier.
So, that would be ten times a bigger change than we had over the past year?
You may have a bigger math brain than I do, but that sounds about correct.
Okay. That just seems like a lot, that seems like a big jump to me.
A .4 increase, .3 increase.
No, it looks like we made .04.
That's correct. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, that's absolutely correct. That's right. It would be approaching a ten times increase, right? It is possible. I have had many clients who've done that. I've had clients who've done more than that in terms of a year-over-year increase.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Could you go to the recognition bar?
Yeah. There we go.
Okay. On that one, is there any way that it could be broken down into like teachers and classified, or is it just one?
Oh, no. In our Gallup Access Tool, which you all have access, we can get, in fact, that's one of the unique things about our survey. If any team has at least four people who responded, they can get detailed information on percentage of ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives on any one of these questions, school level, department level, team level, et cetera. So, yes, that is available to you, sir.
Okay.
Good question. And this is the most common, if you look at the fourth column from the right, this is the most common pattern, but it is not an ubiquitous pattern. I want this slide out of our system for any team I'm action planning, because the lowest one, which is overall satisfaction, you probably have some teams in an organization this size where it's the highest one, where it has a very high quartile ranking. So, even though this is the most common pattern and is the pattern for the entire division, each team will have a unique pattern, and when you're action planning, you look at that. Other ques, yes?
I don't know if it's for you, or for Dan, or for Dr. Haas. You said that there was a lot, there was an uneven improvement across the schools. And I'm, my question goes to, did all schools have the same sort of action plan, or how much, how much do they vary? And if we're not setting out to boil the ocean, how do we pick and choose which variables to focus on? And I have to say, I'm shocked that after we've worked so hard on our strategic plan and our mission statement, that there's, a lot of our staff don't know what that is.
So, a couple-
There was a bunch of them, I'm sorry. I know you can handle it.
They're great questions. First, I would say, it's not necessarily that our staff that are across our employee base that they don't know our mission. My interpretation on that question eight is how they're connecting to it in their work on a day-to-day basis. And I think, I agree with what Mr. Shields has posited, that the question five, the relationship between supervisors and team members, we can really leverage that to move past, here's our mission, we all looked at it, here's our vision, we all looked at it, to start having more meaningful conversations. So, school nurses, as the students are rolling in and sharing things that are difficult for them, ways in which they're hurting, you're showing care and compassion. Those relationships build student engagement, tie students closer to the school, let them know adults care about them, and build achievement. That's our mission. Let's make those really explicit connections, taps on a couple other indicators like recognition. In terms of schools and departments, every school and department chose a Gallup indicator for their improvement plan for this year, and we met from Human Resources with them to make sure they were familiar with and comfortable with the Gallup resources. One of the things that I learned this year that I'm excited about is in box two on this slide, which is really thinking about, instead of setting a Gallup indicator as a goal, what are our goals? As a school division, every school has student learning goals. As an HR, we have employee satisfaction goals, we have fill rate goals. How do these Gallup indicators help us meet that goal? So, rather than focusing on, "I'm going to improve employee recognition, I'm going to improve student learning," how can we celebrate great things that teachers are doing that move the needle on student achievement and therefore impact student learning? So, Gallup is more of the how, and our work as an organization is the what. And I think that gives us some key insight into how we might work going forward.
And if I could just make one other comment on the last thing that Dan was talking about, so I'm going to go back to the questions and I'll do this quickly. So, when people are action planning, we want primarily for them to action plan against the work and not against the 12 elements. The 12 elements, you don't manage to the 12 elements, you manage through the 12 elements. So, we ask every team, every department, every school, first, what's an issue preventing us from meeting our critical goals, our work goals? Secondly, which one of these questions is most relevant? And then, thirdly, as I said earlier, what's one thing we can do in the next couple of weeks to move in that direction? And I think I'm out of time. Thank you all very much. It's been a privilege working, it is a privilege working with you.
Yeah, and I think we can still continue with questions if you're open to that. Are there any other, unless you're on like a time where you gotta, you have-
No, no, I'm good.
We're stuck here.
Mine was more just an observation. I was looking at the, I'm a data geek, so just going through this. So, the item analysis by position, and the one that really stands out to me is this, it's .07, which is at work, my opinions seem to matter. And so, our principals and assistant principals have a 4.19, which really makes me think that like the superintendent's cabinet and all the work that we're doing at that level really, and when the kind of department chairs really are helping those principals and assistant principals feel like what they're saying matters, but the different, you know, we're almost at a one point, I mean, we're at a .9 difference between the principals and assistant principals and teachers. And there's lots, I know there's lots of reasons for that, but I mean, that's a pretty significant difference. And so, really makes me think about, how can we make sure that those teachers feel like their voices are heard and some of what I think the principals and assistant principals are learning from the, you know, the chiefs and the superintendent's cabinet about having their voices heard, how do we help them in places that they can lift up teacher voice, really do that, and kind of in a dual purpose? Like, this is what I felt like, where I heard my, how do I then transfer that over to the teachers that I'm leading?
That's quite germane. I mean, that's a good comment. You may already be aware, Gallup has won two Nobel Prizes in economics, and our first Nobel Prize was won by Danny Kahneman, who also teaches at Princeton. And he won the Nobel Prize, and it's relevant to your comment, for his research that seventy percent of our decisions are limbic system decisions, or to put it more colloquially, are emotional intuitive decisions. And the application of that is, people learn more when they're talking than when they're listening. So, hence the importance of dialogue around the mission, of not only receiving proclamation of what the mission is and what it means, but being able to express themselves on how the mission operationalizes in their job and their team and in their department. But I think your comments were quite good.
The one, this is just my theory around progress. One of the things that Stephen mentioned earlier is that we had taken an intentional action this year with our principals, because when people do the Gallup, they're, in many ways, they're rating the person that directly supervises them, because that's their link to the organization. So, one of the things we talked about earlier this year is, it's been an issue, I joined the school system in 2004, we started something called learning walks, and it never took off. I mean, even when it was required for a teacher to have five learning walks in the fall and five in the spring for their evaluation, we would still get evaluations coming in and it wasn't being done. And it's a four-minute walk-through, sit in the teacher's classroom, check off a few boxes, and then after a series, then you have a meeting with the teacher and you can give them feedback on what you're seeing. And really, the goal of it is, is to get the principal, the assistant principal, out in the building, being collegial with teachers and having them feel like what they're doing matters to their supervisor. And you can also have quality conversations and give feedback, because you have credibility, because you've been in their classroom. So, what we did at the beginning of this year is, we said, we're gonna do the math, and how many would we have first semester as an aggregate if we had an average of five per teacher? And then, at every principals' meeting, we reported to the principals how many we had, what's our goal? And we didn't reach the goal, we made significant progress over where we were the year before, though. But going into the second semester, I said, every principal has to do 10 every week. That's one of the things we learned from York County. When we did the day where everybody came in and exchanged, we learned that one of their strategies was just to have administrators comply with getting out and doing that. And we heard that, too, you know, you're telling us to comply with something, and we're just like, "Yeah, but you'll see. It's going to make an impact, it's going to make a difference." And so, when I saw that number, my theory is that that plus .13, which is the biggest one, it's because they've done thousands and thousands of walks. And for me, it just validates the quality of the principals that we have in the schools and the assistant principals, that when they're getting out and doing that engagement with their teachers, it does matter to the teachers. And I hope that the principals see that, that they see, "Hey, I got out, I did these learning walks, I visited all these classrooms, I was able to give good feedback, and therefore, there's a sense of progress in the work that's getting done." And the other piece I took away was, you can take one thing, just like Stephen said, you can take one thing and just keep that same drumbeat. Let's do it, let's do it, let's do it. And it feels like compliance, but it's really just doing a strategy that's evidence-based, and it'll, it can lift, it can lift everything else. So, that's just one theory that I had, and it's an example of taking an action, holding people to it, holding them accountable, and then moving forward. And I do think the next layer of that is for principals to have one strategy with their teachers, with their teachers, with other staff in the schools, and to say to the teachers, "This is a strategy we're using, this is something we're doing with the students, and I'm going to hold you accountable for that." That I'm going to come, when I come around and do the learning walks, if I'm expecting to see math investigations, I'm going to tell you whether or not you're using it. So that it feels like compliance, and it feels like, wow, that's telling somebody something mean, but it's not being mean, it's just being respectful of the role. And you can deliver the news and say, "I noticed you're not using math investigations, let's talk about it." Actually, that engages that person, because it brings them into a conversation, other than just ignoring the fact that we're not having consistency of a program. So, I do, and that's the gap I see between like the cabinet and the principals, there's that gap. And then, the big gap, right, is because we have to get down to that next layer of really engaging the teachers in the classroom level, so they really feel like people care about what they're doing and are there to support them with feedback. That's my take on that.
Yes, sir.
The other thing I would just add before I go is, I want to remind the school board, when you, you've kind of, you take a risk when you do stuff like this, because all over the state, there are school boards that are just happy with the Virginia climate surveys and all that other stuff. To me, we're outperforming all that, but that's being a tall tree in a short forest. You take a risk, because you're jumping into Gallup, which, that's getting into thin air. The school systems that do this tend to want to go after something higher with their employees. And we need to do that, because we have significant gaps that we're trying to close. But at the same time, you could just say, "Well, we're happy with our climate surveys, we'll move on." This is far more rigorous, because the districts going into this are higher-flying, they're willing to spend the resources to really support their employees. So, in some ways, it's hard to see, you know, not moving out of the bottom, but you're in the bottom of the top, because there's so many places that just don't go after things like this.
That's true.
I had a few questions. The additional item analysis, last year, we had a different set of questions that we got answers for, about pay and incentives being fair in comparison to the job market, diversity and inclusiveness, and everyone at the organization is treated fairly. Do we do year-over-year comparison for that, or do we just pick another set of additional items every year to just kind of measure since we're doing this survey?
Great question. Actually, this year, we had the opportunity to consider, do we want to ask the same three, or do we want to shift? I will confess to choosing, the second question there is an HR benchmark that we want to measure our performance based on. I might be regretting my decisions at this moment, but I do think that's an important one for us to be thinking about in terms of recruiting and retaining employees in this market right now. We need to be thinking about, will our employees recommend us to others as a place to work? So, we did want to go forward with that question. And communication touches on so many of the 12 core questions, it is an integral piece. So, communication is a potential pathway for us to improve overall engagement. So, we wanted to use that as another measure. The pay and incentive question, we were actually looking to that as one of our benchmarks also in HR related to compensation. How do employees feel about the compensation they're receiving in terms of fairness? So, that's the rationale.
Okay, and then my second, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Redding. The second question that I had, and we might be getting to some of this, but just on the board level, while I appreciate we're doing this work, it feels kind of like that movie. I remember the quote where it's like, "Step one idea, step two, step three is profit," and nobody knows what step two is. So, that's what it kind of feels like, is step one data, step three is where we want to be. And on the school board, I kind of lose sight of where is step two. So, to Judy's point, it seems like we're going to have to do something, something, much more than what we've been doing to get that 10% or the 10x increase that we want to see what we got over this past year. So, my question is, are we going to have a presentation around that, or is that just an amalgamation of all the different things we're doing? But that's what's kind of missing for me today is.
Okay.
And as a positive, just to say, I do really like how you very clearly put the data from last year, the data from this year. That's something that's nice, that we can just see. Question is, what are we doing to make these go up?
So, let me make a comment and I'll kick to you, because I think you probably have more to say. more to say on that. So every level of leadership within the organization needs to action plan, down to the team level and also at the highest level of the organization. For example, I was with the general, and I was action planning for the 18,000 to 19,000 people that reported up to her. And I was with the general and with her senior staff. And what I said to them, what are the sources of disengagement? That if you in this room do not work on them, no other leader on basis Hispanic control to be able to address them. Simultaneously, every subordinate team is working on local sources of engagement and sources of disengagement. In that way, you're very comprehensive in your approach, because you're attacking little issues. She turns the thermostat up, I turn the thermostat down every day, and you're also dealing with big issues. We do not have enough parking at this particular building. So it helps you to deal with all those kinds of issues.
I am smiling, because that was the biggest fight I got in with the teacher when I was teaching, was the thermostat. I got yelled at, because the thermostat wasn't at the right temperature. It's a big problem, okay, for some people.
No, that's why I mentioned it.
It's one of the reasons I always wanted a trailer classroom, because you had your own thermostat.
Okay, I was in a trailer classroom, and the thermostat didn't get set to the right thing, and she was very upset the next day. I'm like, I didn't touch it!
I believe this slide kind of provides the best roadmap for us in terms of this action planning. We have this data, next week during the executive leadership team meeting, we're coming back together with principals and directors. They'll have had some time to unpack local data and have a little bit of guidance. There will be some more work done around what does this look like as we go into next year. The first step, of course, is making the data transparent. So, for example, within HR, I'll be bringing the HR department-level data to the HR team and saying, here's where we went, here's where we improved as a department, here's where our scores went down. We're gonna start thinking and planning as an HR team over the summer for, what's our work next year? How do these indicators help us achieve those goals? And what one can we leverage and focus upon in order to move our goals forward? What we're hearing from Gallup is, that's how their participating organizations make progress on engagement, embedding the indicators in the day-to-day work. As a former principal, I hugely believe in trying to embed this in all the other work that is happening. Our principals and our directors have their hands full, there's plenty to be done. So the ways in which we can integrate this as part of the existing plate, rather than here's another side dish on your plate, I think will be helpful in ensuring that it's manageable and doable.
Okay, so is it fair, then, to have a working, if this is a priority we're making, or teacher engagement and pushback if y'all don't feel it is, but I feel like, is this fair to add for a work session or another update later in the year when we get that kind of missing piece? Because I remember the first time we had this presentation, there was talk of, like, how do we improve our teacher recognition, what are some things that we're doing? So maybe a check-in about what we're doing to make it so that when we get this report next year?
Yeah, I would love to see almost just like, because I know you have it, like, almost to see that visual of like, that timeframe of like, this is what we're doing by when and how the data is being shared out, and then if there's a way for us in a working session to see, and if we don't, you know, we can decide, so if it's, we can do it by, like, what the goals are by school or department, or if, like, across the board, these are the different types of things people are, like, working on, just so that we can kind of visually see what those are and talk through them, I think it'd be helpful.
So I have to give you one example. You have a school that went up by .55, and last year, all they focused on was praise and recognition.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
And they increased precipitously.
Yeah, what's the one thing? I hear you. Like, what's the one thing everyone can be laser-focused on, remember and, like, operationalize?
Sorry for stealing your thunder.
But I think we'd like to hear more of some of those stories about what those are.
Okay, so I put it in our list of proposed topics in our working docs, employee engagement efforts, EEE. Already got a name for it.
All right, one other question. Could you go back to the frame that looks like a triangle?
Yeah. This one? Oh, you want to go back to the 12 questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Okay. All right, and over in the column, it says employee needs, right?
Yeah, basic needs, yes.
All right, is there anything else, are there any follow-ups to those things that would help us to focus on those needs, or?
Yes.
Okay.
So one thing that we encouraged your leaders yesterday is to look at all the data. And I'm giving you tonight the quantitative data, but your leaders also need, and when I say leader, I'm talking about any level of people, leadership in the organization. They also need to look at the quantitative data. The quantitative data, I'm sorry, the qualitative data. The qualitative data is what people say about why an item is high or why an item is low. Those summaries in the last column on the right that you identified, those are summaries of a common definition of each one of those questions, but people think about what they think about for each one of these questions. For example, when I work in hospitals, on question number two, do I have the materials and equipment, I need to do my job right? My hospital leaders say, you know what we don't have enough of? We don't have enough nurses. We need more nurses. And they apply that to question number two, even though it says materials and equipment. And what I never do is say, you're wrong, you should not be thinking about that, because I want to know what that qualitative data is of how they're interpreting the questions. So the way that you can get an idea of what those questions mean in a school, of what those questions mean to a team, of what those questions mean in a division, is to ask people, why is this high and why is this low? Their response is what we actually encourage people to action plan around. That's a very good question.
I have one last question, just for those who, I guess, weren't here for the presentation last year. I think I remember you saying this last year, are there, is there, is some of this data specific to school settings, correct?
Yes, when we percentile rank you, it's against the K-12 database.
Okay, great, I just wanted to make that clear. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much for this presentation and providing this information and being here today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and we'll be back in the fall to talk more about 3E.
3E, we've got a name for it now. I love it. Okay, that brings us to, we're 10 minutes out of schedule, we're gonna go ahead and do our break, I think we've beat it. That will be, we'll be reconvening at 8:00 for our last two topics.
One minute past. Our eight o'clock return. We're waiting on Dr. Haas run. No, you can walk. The next presentation that we have will be transportation. An update and plans for our 2023-2024 school year. Ms. White will be presenting.
You can start. Thank you.
You can pull down the mic, Ms. White.
Yes, here we go. Can everyone hear me? Very good. Good evening to you, the members of the school board. This school year has been quite a journey. However, I am pleased to be leading this mission to meet the transportation needs for the students of Alamo County Public Schools. As we look at the strategic plan of the school division, learning for all, the Transportation Department primarily aligns with goal three: equitable transformative resources. Our staffing updates consist of fourteen home-to-school vacancies. Presently, eight drivers are in training and training plans are underway for staff who show interest in driving next year. Since the start of school, twelve routes have been consolidated, nine drivers have completed training and started a route, six drivers have resigned or either retired. On-time arrival. The data that you're looking at reflects the weeks of May 1 through 5. The department's goal is ninety-eight percent on-time arrival across the division due to the hard work of the employees. For example, hiring, route modification, double back runs, split out routes, et cetera. Out of our daily two-hundred-and-fifty-one morning routes, ninety-eight point nine arrived on time or up to fifteen minutes late. Now, this is an improvement from where we started at the beginning of the year. However, the way we achieved this task isn't sustainable. We want to stabilize our workforce and meet our goal of ninety-eight percent on-time arrival daily. So, let's look a little closer at the work that has been done this year. I've said this before, but I want to state it again. On behalf of the Transportation Department, we want to express our appreciation to you for the driver's pay increase. The step-scale approach has set us above our competitors. Again, thank you. So, we look at what we've done this year. As I said, we've increased route modifications, consolidations. We looked at the, I've already stated, the driver's pay increase. Our recruitment efforts: radio ads, local TV commercials, local newspaper ads, job fair. We targeted outreach to include Job Corps, UVA students, et cetera, and even a referral bonus. We diversified our fleet. We're using the Type-I buses. And we're also using electric buses. We evaluated the bell schedules and we evaluated what we call third-party partnership, which is outsourcing. And we're still in the negotiation phase of the solicitation, so more information is forthcoming. Okay, looking ahead to the next school year, Transportation wants to maximize and fully utilize the drivers we have. Prioritize services to those who need it and stabilize daily operation and provide predictable for all drivers, families, and school staff. All right, so the Transportation Leadership Team, along with the superintendent, developed what is called Guiding Principles. They are as follows. The following guiding principles were used to evaluate the viability of each modification. Each modification will improve on-time arrival, stabilize the daily work for staff, and normalize the work from day to day, provide consistency for drivers, families, and students, not adversely impact compensation, be simple, consistent, and easy to explain internally and externally, be implemented within each fetal pattern and not impact one fetal pattern more than the other, and have advantages that are more significant than the disadvantages. And lastly, pass an equity checklist. In addition, these modifications and guiding principles were reviewed and evaluated by the PMOC and principals both elementary and secondary for procedural processes and students, family, and employees' impact. We have partnered with the Equity Team to ensure we are mitigating the plans to reduce as much as possible the equity impact across the school division. Our planned modifications for the 2023-24 school year. We want to expand the walk zones. We want to consolidate the bus stops on private roads, utilize more stack routes, update the registration process, and eliminate service to an open route if drivers are unavailable. Now, let's take a look at our walk zones. We propose an increase of point five miles for elementary and point five miles for secondary. That being said, it will be a mile for elementary and a mile and a half for secondary. The impacted schools are listed. This modification will save us about two buses. Some areas, we expanded the walk zone. And in some areas, as you see there, the schools are listed there, we have implemented walk zones. The Transportation will consolidate bus stops on private roads and neighborhoods where there is a safe community place to have just a few larger pickup locations. This saves approximately two-hundred miles and approximately eleven hours daily of drive time, division-wide. And again, the impacted schools are stated. Here is a visual of what this change means. Currently, buses circulate through the neighborhoods with multiple bus stops. Next year, where safe, these bus stops will be consolidated into larger community stops. This saves time and allows the bus to be potentially utilized to serve other neighborhoods. Stack routes. This is a model which we have in place now at Greer and Agna Heard. Now, a stack route is when a bus will drop some students up to fifteen minutes early to school and then pick up additional students and bring them to school on time. This change will affect the afternoon as well. Some students will leave on time and others will be dismissed up to fifteen minutes early. Stack routes will replace double-back runs which have proven to provide inconsistent student service, late arrivals, and are extremely difficult to communicate with daily changes. Transportation wants to start with a clean slate. This will allow for greater route consolidation and fuller use of buses. The registration will not automatically roll over. Beginning next week, all families must either request or deny transportation for the next school year. The registration deadline is June 30, 2023. After the deadline, students will be placed on a waiting list if there is no capacity on their assigned bus. Requesting transportation before the deadline does not guarantee service. The deadline does not apply to new students who register after the deadline or students whose IEP require transportation accommodations. During the school year, if a student doesn't ride for ten consecutive days, they will be removed and placed on a waiting list if capacity is not available when they re-register. Let me be clear. The transportation, the communication surrounding the registration process is critical. That being said, we have partnered with the Communications Department to ensure all students are notified of these changes. They have done such an amazing work in such a short time to help us meet the needs to contact every student and family. Open routes. Transportation will no longer be able to serve routes which are open when a driver is unavailable. And let me pause for a minute. This is not a conversation that we really want to have with our families. But I have to be transparent and let you know where we are. The routes will be planned with capacity maximized. So, this will eliminate the ability to split, double back, or modify routes, which is what has occurred this year. We are trying to increase our relief driver pool. And a relief driver basically is a sub-driver. This will help with the disruption of daily call-outs but may result in more open routes. Families will be notified by July 31, 2023 if they do not, if Transportation doesn't have a driver for them. Again, this is not a conversation that we want to have with our families. However, I am hopeful that if we're able to implement the modifications and to continue to recruit new drivers, then it will reduce the number of open routes. All right, so let's take a look at how we're going to develop our routes and the assignments. So, route designs, we will utilize route designs from this year. Then, we will modify the years with the year's registration data and we're going to consolidate where feasible. And then, we will implement the stack routes where possible. That's how we're going to design the routes. When we look at the assignment, route assignment, assignments will be prioritized by the following. Routes with higher percentage of gap Group One students, special needs education students, English language learners, and our economically disadvantaged students. We will balance out the resources. We will not necessarily put all the resources in one area and then the other area is without. We will try our best to balance out our resources. And this third point is critical and very important to our drivers. They've asked, can you possibly try to get us close to where we live? And we want to try to do that if we can. All right, so then we land on the subject of open routes. If route succeeds available drivers, routes will be considered open routes. If all other steps are effective, the number of open routes will hopefully be minimized. So, what are our next steps? Letters will go home to families the week of May 15. Individual letters, the walk zone information, bus stop changes, just your general letters to all requiring to respond either yes or no to transportation. And we, we need and want a hundred, one-hundred percent response. We've already spoken with our principals. We are meeting with the OAs. Because this component of what we're trying to do, the registration process, is critical. So, our policy. The policy draft is attached. It will be on your May 25 consent agenda for action. And again, the registration deadline will be June 30, 2023. This concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
You've had a challenging job this year, Ms. White.
Yes.
Who are the, who are the relief drivers?
Presently, we only have about one relief, about one relief drivers, and we need more.
And the relief drivers are full-time staff? We don't have like a list like we have substitute teachers?
Yes, exactly. The relief driver is considered, it's more like a sub, so you can understand their duties, but it's, it's like a full-time position. The relief driver will go wherever the assignment is, but it would be a full-time position.
I mean, maybe there's regulations against having something like a list of substitute teachers. I mean, is it possible to have former drivers that can pitch hit sometimes? Or not? I mean, is, what are the barriers to something like that?
Okay, so what has been the barrier in the past is because it's unpredictable. You don't know your assignment in a given day. A lot of drivers become very attached to our students, as you know, and they'd rather be assigned to a specified route every day. And that being said, a relief doesn't do that. You, you never know. When you come in, you could, you could be on Bus Two, Bus Five, Bus Fifteen, Bus Twenty. And that's the nature of the relief position. But we, we have, we're working with HR to try to come up with some other ways to maybe design the assignment so it would be more attractive.
I see Ms. Schmidt coming up too.
I want to add to that as well. So, the relief driver is a permanent position. It's the equivalent of our permanent subs.
I guess, could, could, could we go to like a substitute teacher list?
They do have a very limited sub. I think you have one or two sub-drivers. It's hard, again, as much, as it's hard to find a driver, it's hard to find a substitute. I did want to call specific attention to is we put a message out in our compass asking if we have existing staff, TAs, OAs, anybody else that would want to drive. And we had a very positive response. I think almost eighteen different people of different organizations said, I can't do it full-time, but I would love to help. And so, we're working on training plans to train those staff over the summer that could fill in like a substitute as needed on occasion.
Right, I mean, I guess the question goes to, I know we have, people have healthcare appointments and, you know, to the degree that we could plan someone to come in for a day or two, that would be great. How long is the training program to train a driver? I see that we have eight that are being trained right now.
Yes, so it takes about forty, forty-five, up to, it could be sixty days getting you trained pending your schedule. The, I've shared with the trainers and the trainees. If you're available, we can make this process go through much sooner.
So, they're not all in class together?
Excuse me?
They're not all in class together?
Well, what happens is the first couple of weeks is DOE mandates a twenty-four-hour class, twenty-four hours behind the wheel. So, the minimum is forty-eight hours.
Okay.
The minimum. But again, it's based upon how successful the trainee is moving through the program.
So, it's possible we'll have more than the eight that are on training right now?
We certainly hope so. We are trying with all we know. The recruitment process is, we're going to continue doing that. And we are, we are hopeful.
Thank you.
Can you tell us where we are in the outsourcing?
Outsourcing, we're still in the solicitation process. We're trying to negotiate. And so, as you know, I'm not at liberty to go any further with that. I can share with you right now is looking at, it could cost us maybe five million dollars, roughly.
Not a significant number.
No.
So, in terms of the registration getting properly registered, just looking at the transportation update, it looks like we have anywhere from three to four thousand people registered more than our actual daily registration still.
Correct. And that is a struggle for us because we, we end up planning for about three thousand children. That equates to almost twenty buses. So, if we could have a more accurate account of how many children need transportation, then it will help us in our planning. And it also will help us with less open routes.
So, I, I guess I thought that we were having a more strict registration process this year. I know at the beginning of the year when we I know at the beginning of the year when we talked about it, we thought that it was going to shake out so that we had a better sense.
What would delay it was because we had a lot of parent traffic. Our administrators and OAs were a little hesitant just to pull students off. But this year, we're approaching it, and that's why we're meeting to talk about the logistics of how we need to do that so we can be assured that if students need the transportation, it will be available if capacity will allow it. And if you don't, we will be asking parents to transport.
I know that when we were discussing the pay raises, a big part of our discussion was comparison with Charlottesville. How would you compare our transportation issues? Like, are they still having transportation issues as we are?
Yes, they are. I certainly, what I would say about the, with Albemarle, I can't express enough, that's why I said thank you so much for implementing and deciding to increase the pay because the, the scale, the step scale is what has put us above the others. They are still struggling with recruitment as well, and so are we. But what we also know is that the step scale has served to be a retention tool for us. And that's a, that's a great team. We're doing all we know, not only to recruit, but we want to retain our drivers as well. And so that's where we're seeing the strength of the pay increase.
I noticed that we had nine trained this year, but then we lost six. Is that turnover about, is that what you would have expected in a normal year?
That's a little, that's compatible to what we've seen for one reason or another, whether sickness, the family dynamics change, or whether they found something that was more suitable for their families, they chose to, to leave. Some were not successful in training. And so it's just a, a different, whatever the dynamics was for that employee landed them at making the decision they didn't want to stay with us, and some retired.
And who gets to drive the electric buses?
Well, that's a snap, that's a picture of our electric bus there. So it's anybody certified.
But they're, they're functioning as you would have expected.
Yes, they are.
Okay, at the beginning of this year, when we had the double routes, there was a problem because I think certain students, either economically or racially, were being, every day being picked up early. If we go with the stacked route process, will that be eliminated?
I can't say it would be eliminated, but what's going to happen? Now, we can't implement stacked routes at all the schools. Where it's possible, and we've indicated in the presentation, which schools can actually accommodate stacked routes. It just isn't going to work, time won't allow it. So, that being said, our routing design is going to focus on what we consider our gap group one. And so, that being said, they are across the county. So we just don't have resources to accommodate all the routes, but we're going to do the best we can to make sure that we get as many as we can there on time, and then if not on time, within that fifteen-minute window. So hopefully I'm answering, answering your question. We're going to try to balance that out as much as we can, Mr. Page.
Okay, thanks.
I have a, just some quick questions as well. Communication, communication, communication. I really appreciate this presentation. It sounds like, one, we're centering the needs of our school bus drivers in a way that we probably haven't in the past because we've just been so focused on how can we do the service? And it sounds like the answer just might be, we can't at the same level. We don't have enough drivers. We can't ask them to solve all of our problems. We don't have enough. So I appreciate the honesty, open clarity around where we are, communicating that to families, especially if we're going to be changing how we put students on buses and having to proactively make, make them register. I am confident we'll be able to do that because I know I personally got calls from all of my kids, both my kids' teachers several times when I didn't respond to them, about what were my plans for the bus. So just making sure they get that information. And that's really, that's, those are really my only comments, is just a really big focus on letting families know where we stand. And I can appreciate that we're not in a great place, but letting people know so they can plan appropriately is important.
I, I mean, I just want to say, Charmaine, you've just been amazing this year. You've been a great leader through this whole thing. You just took a ship that was on the rocks, and you're finding the path and keeping it moving forward. You and your team, William Renee, all the, all the staff that you have. It's been a really tough leadership role this year. And I, you know, and every chance I get, I want you all to know just how much I appreciate it because of what it does for the kids that, that need to get to school. The other piece I would point out is that we're going to continue to have the staffing like ceiling for the transportation department at where it was originally so that we're still going to keep recruiting to get the drivers so that as we are, you know, I'm, I am optimistic because of our strategies around, around the pay scale and the pay increases and the improving climate in, in the transportation departments, but steadily improving under Charmaine's leadership, that we, as we add bus drivers, then we will alleviate the, the plans that we're having in place. So our plan is not to manage expectations down and then just say, well, now, now, good news, now we don't need as many bus drivers. It's going to be, we're, we're going to build that fleet back to where it should be so that we, we have more services for students.
Dr. Haas, thank you so much for your comments, but I certainly couldn't do what I do without this team right here. So I really appreciate them. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
I did have a quick question, if that's all right. I don't know how like it plays out, but in the past, I have been on bus routes where a lot of school bus stops have been just like juniors and seniors. Would there be a way to like add questions about whether, like, in my case at least, I know I'm fortunate enough to get to drive to school the most days, which I know a lot of kids are not able to, and I value that. But would there be a way to like add like a question somewhere in all the communication if a student becomes able to drive to school and they can communicate that to the school and not have to make that extra stop?
Yes, we will, great feedback. We will certainly take a look at that and see what we need to do to implement that.
Okay, I didn't know that was a possibility. I just, it was worth mentioning.
We'll take a look at it and see whether or not that's an option for us to do that. But great feedback. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all. We are thirteen seconds ahead of schedule. We'll move on to our last presentation, Community Engagement.
Good evening, Chair Carlson and School Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update from the Office for Community Engagement. At the end of last school year, our department underwent a restructure to include the addition of two directors with specific emphasis on the Culturally Responsive Teaching Program and Equity School-Family and Community Partnerships. In addition, the Communications Department has joined forces with the OCE to focus our efforts on expanding our engagement and communications reach to historically marginalized students and stakeholders. Through the review of division data, including assessment, panorama, Gallup, as well as community engagement feedback from our students, families, employees, our team has begun work to implement initiatives to focus on academic achievement of students, trust, and relationship building to empower our students, families, staff, community to become equal partners in these efforts. We continue to refine our Culturally Responsive Teaching Program to support staff with their work towards meeting and exceeding the goals identified in our strategic plan, Learning for All. It is critical that we support educators to successfully engage with and teach culturally, linguistically, ethnically, racially diverse students and students with special capacities to close achievement gaps. Since its inception in two thousand and fifteen, the ACPS Culturally Responsive Teaching Program continues to evolve, expand, and equip educators with necessary strategies and techniques to ensure culturally inclusive and responsive learning environments that support academic achievement for all students. This year, the Equity Specialist Team, led by Ms. Ayanna Mitchell, Director of Equity Education, made several program adjustments to include clarifying overall expectations such as general requirements, our application process, data collection, and timelines, providing timely resources and exemplars, streamlining professional development, having tighter alignment to instructional practices, differentiating professional development for classified and non-classified staff, differentiating the credentialing assessment process, and aligning resources to address equity gaps in the most impacted schools. In a few moments, Ms. Mitchell will highlight the work of the Equity Team and provide micro-credentialing and certification cohort information for this school year. Along with the Culturally Responsive Teaching Program and the anti-racism and transgender gender expansive policy work, which we will expand on during an upcoming school board meeting, our department has focused on facilitating empowerment of students and families and reigniting engagement of our business and community partners, giving them voice and agency with the work of the division. Through our engagement with stakeholders this year, we have heard feedback about the importance of being active participants in students' education, trust, allowing for all voices to be heard, and transparency regarding follow-up actions from the division based on stakeholder feedback. We have begun the relationship and trust-building with our stakeholders and have plans for more intentional engagement activities for students, families, staff, and community partners. After the Culturally Responsive Teaching Program highlights from Ms. Mitchell, Dr. Eric Irizari, Director of Equity School-Family and Community Relations, will provide a summary of the school and community engagement activities and events from this school year. At the end of the presentation, I will provide information regarding our plans for the Culturally Responsive Teaching Program and community engagement moving forward. But for now, I'm handing it over to Ms. Mitchell, Director of Equity Education.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone. As you know, I just saw you all at the work session. We talked about our PD. So I'm hoping to help answer some of those questions and share a little bit more with you about that. So I have a little video before I get into it, just from some of our educators who talk about what is culturally responsive teaching.
Culturally responsive teaching is broken into really three parts. The first is about understanding ourselves as educators and as humans, our own lenses, and then also getting to know our students and their families and their worldview. The second is really about using that in instruction. So how can I capitalize on the various backgrounds and strengths and cultural assets of my students to help them learn? And the third part is really about partnerships. How can educators partner with families and the community and students in order to increase academic outcomes?
Culturally responsive teaching is teaching in a way that empowers the culture of all students. It is seeking ways to engage, seeking ways to acknowledge, seeking ways to understand the students who are in your classroom and making learning meaningful for every single student.
The difference in culturally responsive teaching and just good teaching, I think that with culturally responsive teaching, you take that extra step to really figure out what elements of your instruction are vital to the learning and what other kind of structures in your classroom may actually be holding students back or preventing barriers to success for certain groups.
So as you can see, our work is deeply rooted in the outcomes that we are looking for as stated in our mission statement here in Albemarle County Public Schools. And in our department, we have Stephen, which you met on the video, before he became an Equity Specialist, Shay, Megan, and Leslie, who all share all of our buildings and all of our departments to work towards closing achievement gaps and supporting educators, excuse me, to make those changes that were discussed by those educators. So we are able to provide levels of support on the division level, the school level, and the classroom level. You can see that we do everything from creating and implementing professional development opportunities that support our strategic goals on the highest level by working with cabinet members, directors, and county level leaders, all the way down to supporting and coaching individual teachers and administrators in buildings in order to help support their growth in being culturally responsive. I'll give you a moment because I don't believe in reading slides. So you can see what I'll do. So last time I was here, we talked about all of the ways in which professional development is supported here and what is our model. By providing job-embedded, self-directed, just-in-time, and content-focused collaborative work with our educators, we're able to meet the goals. Now, we do only have four Equity Specialists, and you know, we do not only have four buildings, so that means they're spread thin and they work very hard to do all of the things you saw them, saw that they do. For years, we've had the goal of building collective efficacy around culturally responsive teaching in order to increase equitable outcomes for all students. So my question for you, and I will share, is how are we doing? What have you heard? How are we doing? That's my question for you.
You must be doing something right. You have more and more people signing up to be, get certifications in culturally responsive teaching.
So right now, you'll see that, and in the, in the report that I attached earlier, you'll notice that in twenty fifteen, sixteen, when we started our credentialing, there was only a certification, and there was a small number of educators who chose to participate in that program. By twenty eighteen, we introduced a micro-credential, which allowed an increase of different ways in which people could participate and be part of the programming. To get a certification, you would need to do reflective work around all three characteristics in our program that was mentioned by Monica a little bit earlier. And to do a micro-credential, you would focus on one of those characteristics. That plan has developed over time, even as I was an Equity Specialist, but I saw where we were missing some things and we had some challenges, and I saw where our strengths were. As of right now, we have two hundred and eighty-seven credentialed educators currently employed in the school division. We've actually led about three hundred and fifty-six people through the credentialing process since twenty fifteen, but we've had people who have moved out of the school division and gone to other opportunities. Of those two hundred and eighty-seven credentialed educators, sixty are building level Of those 287 credentialed educators, 60 are building level or division-level leaders, instructional coaches, lead coaches, and LTIs. Thirty-two are building administrators. So most every building has an administrator who has a microcredential or is fully certified. Some have two. This year, a window just opened for our new cohort, so between May 8th and the 19th, we are expecting up to 165 submissions. Of those, 50% of the candidates are classroom teachers, which means they're having direct impact on instruction in the classroom, and the other 50% are other instructional staff. They are administrators, specialists, and... Teacher assistants? Yeah. So we have a few different other categories. So we are trying to work with classified and non-classified staff because we know that to be a culturally responsive school division, everyone has to be part of the, part of this process. Eric, I'm going to pass this over to you to talk about that.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Haas, School Board. We've been working as a team as well to really engage our community. This year was the first year, true year back from COVID, and so we started off with a few different initiatives this year. One of them was the Community Information Session. And that was a new initiative to bring current, or what we call hot topics of information, to our families and to our stakeholders. So using feedback from our community and through our advisory groups, topics were selected, and then we brought in national, state, and local experts to give pertinent information to our attendees and to our families. These meetings were done through Zoom, recorded, and then shared through our ACPS YouTube channel, and included topics like safety, special education, and mental health. We also held our first Equity and Opportunity Fair, and early last summer, Dr. Kaiser, realizing the connection between our equity work, teacher retention and recruitment, and student achievement, had the vision for this Equity and Opportunities Fair. And the purpose of this fair was to showcase our equity work at the division level, and then at the same time, partner with HR to hold onsite interviews for some of those critical positions. So in February, we hosted the first Equity and Opportunities Fair at Burley, and hosted over 100 participants and offered three early contracts. Community events were also a big focus for us this year, so you see some of these pictures from the Back to School Bash. Ashby Kinler works very hard behind the scenes to make sure that our students receive school materials and backpacks, but also our technology department was there, transportation, ESOL to help with some of the translation. School nurses and administrators were there to distribute COVID kits, the backpacks, school supplies, and just answer questions that a lot of our families had. We also worked with Habitat for Humanity in the Southwest, Southwood Boys and Girls Club, and brought back the Southwood Back to School Celebration. Mountain View Elementary, Burley, and Monticello High School families were able to get schedules, meet their teachers, learn their bus routes. Principals and teachers were there just to do meet and greets. Our technology helped register and make sure power school information was up to date. And despite the rain, we had over 300 participants attend the event in the Southwood community. We've also worked really hard at gathering community stakeholder input. Many of you all have participated in our magisterial meetings, so school board members have participated in four magisterial meetings this year, and we're in the process of planning a fifth later this month. These meetings have been open to all of our families and our feeder patterns, and have provided an opportunity for direct dialogue with our school board members and provided some valuable feedback. Also, Dr. Haas has been very busy with his listening tours in our school buildings, and he's held numerous listening sessions with staff and students, and staff and students were able to give open feedback directly to the superintendent. And in case you're wondering, our elementary schools lobbied very hard for full-day recess, lunch, and PE. The employee and family, where am I? There we go. We've held some employee and family forums and student forums as well, three sets of each, with our students, with their families, and with our staff. And for families, we're using Panorama data to really dive a little deeper into some of the areas we didn't score as high as we'd like to, really trying to figure out what we can do to better engage our families, especially the families that we're not hearing from. Yesterday, we held our third community partner breakfast, and that was a chance for our community partners to give some feedback on curriculum planning for Center Two, and we've also talked to our community partners about work-based learning and CLCs as we move into that phase of the work. We've also worked with the schools to do school-based family engagement. So we've worked with Burley Middle School, and there is not here anymore, but we worked really hard with Albemarle High School to engage with our families. So Burley Middle School held their first Black community and family meeting, which was very well-attended by not only our schools and School Division, but by our families as well. Again, still trying to get information on how we can better serve our families. And I know Albemarle High School, with their changing demographics, has worked hard to hear from their Latino families as well, and those Latino family nights have become more and more popular, and we're getting some great feedback from those folks as well. It doesn't end in the school, just like we have the Southwood event. Mountain View is working hard to establish an event in the Timberland community early this summer as well. Again, still trying to get information and get information out, but also get information in on how we can better meet the needs of our community. And lastly, student voice and leadership and representation has been, it's been probably one of the, I don't know, fill-in-your-cup experiences that we've had. We've assisted AHS in developing their student equity team. Earlier this year, we had some student groups that had some conflict with each other. Darren, his admin team, along with his counselors and ESOL teachers, worked really hard to establish affinity groups, the Black Student Union, the Latinx Student Union, and others, to bring them together for meaningful dialogue. Not only did it start to work out some of the conflict they're having, they've found out that they have a lot more in common than they have differences, and they're beginning to work closer together, social events, doing podcasts together, and that hopefully will serve as our model for the ACPS Student Senate that we hopefully will have at each of our high schools next year. We've also worked with the Athletic Directors and the Latino Health Initiative to provide opportunities for free physicals for our students that need them, especially our ESOL Latino community. Oftentimes, the physicals themselves are barriers to engagement after school and in extracurricular activities. Additionally, it looks like Parks and Rec for Albemarle Two is requiring physicals for middle-age, middle-school-age students. So again, we're still trying to break down those barriers to access those sports or clubs. And there was a great story about Albemarle and their intramural soccer team that seems to be undefeated, and it's opportunities like that. They can't participate without a physical, but there's that need to engage those students in the work outside of the classroom as well. So again, just trying to bring everyone together. And then we've supported community initiatives. One of the last ones we did was the House of Cuts event that has been traveling to schools, talking to, House of Cuts is a local barber shop here, and they've been giving free haircuts and braiding hair for our students, talking about gun violence, and talking to them about different careers, you know, in the cosmetology field. The picture you see there, UVA football players were on hand as well, just to build that community around students. Obviously, gun violence is impacting our whole community, but especially our youth, and this was an opportunity for everyone to come together in a positive environment. And then volunteer re-engagement. We've had over, and this number keeps going up, over 2,900 active volunteers this year, and we've been able to re-engage with a lot of our, a lot of our partners that give us our volunteers and help us with volunteer recruitment, including America Reads. UVA Athletics has really come on strong this year, getting UVA athletes out into our buildings. Jabba Fish, Central Black Men in Virginia, Crescendo Junto, which is a great organization, they've been working hard at Burley, or sorry, Journey, and Albemarle High School, and then our Moka Woka program has been very strong as well.
So moving forward, our goals for the Culturally Responsive Teaching Program include providing more opportunities during contract hours to work through Culturally Responsive Teaching Program, supporting more educators to obtain micro-credentialing and certification through self-selected pacing, research, and directly aligning tasks with professional learning community or PLC work, developing various pathways for school and grade-level cohorts to obtain the microcredential, and designing a new administrator course for those without a culturally responsive teaching credential, as well as a refresher course, including a speaker series that we're going to work on in collaboration with the Human Resources Department for culturally responsive school and division leadership, to support them in working with diverse educators and staff to improve culture, increase support, especially emotional support, working conditions, et cetera, to improve the likelihood that educators and staff will remain in the division. Also, in collaboration with the Human Resources Department and the African-American Teaching Fellows, we are developing a quarterly workshop as a pilot with African-American teachers to establish trust, provide supports for daily teaching, as well as social, emotional, mental health wellness, et cetera, again, with the goal of increasing the likelihood of teachers remaining in the division. Regarding community engagement, fully activating and engaging our families, businesses, and community partners through providing diverse opportunities for families to participate in school-based activities with specific emphasis on academic and curricular programming. For example, we've talked with the principals about sponsoring four academic events next year for their families, a reading night, a math night, a content, science or social studies, or social-emotional learning, and a multicultural event. And then continuing to solicit participation from our business and community partners, such as volunteering, mentoring, work-shadowing opportunities, internships, apprenticeships, and provide a platform for our partners to give feedback on instructional programming, as well as opportunities to collaborate directly with school communities on various projects. And then specifically addressing the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students by initiating a Student Senate to assume leadership and decision-making on various issues, including extracurricular activities, for example, like offerings and participation across the division, and then seeking out community partners to provide services and make connections for families. One example, Star Hill Pathway Program, which you'll hear more about in an upcoming school board meeting, serves the whole student with exposure to career pathways, but then they also support families, connecting them with community resources. So these are a few of the identified initiatives for our team that we will work on next school year, and we look forward to coming back to the school board with an update on progress during the next school year. And then at this time, we will take questions.
So there was a lot in there that was really, really great. I appreciate it. And Ms. Mitchell, I apologize because it's hard for me to, I always think I'll talk at the end, but one thing I will say about CRT is that, and I've said this before up here, those Equity Conferences that I go to at the end of the year are my favorite day of the whole year because I get to see educators of all kinds talking about ways in which they're changing fundamentally how they're doing their job. They're understanding themselves better, they're reaching their students better, they're showing the data behind it, showing, it's just my favorite day. One thing I'm really glad to see, you talk about, is giving contract hours to finish that work. I think that we've always said that it was important, but we didn't put our money where our mouth was, were. So I'm really glad to see that. One thing that just gave me a little bit of pause was the chart that you showed of credentialed staff and teachers at each school. You see that the very lowest numbers are at Greer and AHS, where we have possibly the highest concentration of students from traditionally marginalized groups. So I will just say that is disheartening to me, and I'm not sure if you have any insight to share about that, or I'm hopeful that it'll go up.
So are we. So that's part of where we're going to be really thinking about next year, how we use Equity Specialists to really be in targeted spaces, working directly with PLCs where we see and notice the largest gaps. So once that data, this new data comes in, we'll be able to work directly with our Intervention, Director of Intervention, and work with our lead coaches. And we've already started conversations about where we can kind of sit together to talk about who's doing what, so you're not overwhelming teachers by everybody showing up, but how do we support them with the things that they need, whether it's instructionally or developing classroom spaces that need to be more culturally responsive? What does that mean? And how do we work together to do that? And then having cohorts be able to complete the credentialing process at the same time so that it doesn't feel like one more thing. So that's part of why we want to really be intentional about how we target, how those, next year will be five Equity Specialists, who are going to be in buildings to really support educators where they need to be. Right now, it's been more of, people just said, yes, I want to be in the credentialing process, where we're going to be very intentional about where we put our energy in order to support that for those reasons. I will say Wendy Eckerly has done an amazing job leading her cohort of educators this year. She got her certification last year, and she has been working to lead with Steve their cohort through. I think they're anticipating one of the highest numbers of people who will be in a school, who'll be completing their credential this year. Burley is another one that had an extremely low number, and they too are another one that will be matriculating through a very large number this year. That's the anticipation. They've been working very hard at that this year.
Great, that's good to hear. Thank you.
I think, Dr. Irazare, I think you mentioned job shadowing and reaching out to the business community. One of the things that I've been concerned about for several years now is that not all of our students are equally situated to get great job shadowing or internships in the community. How do we make sure our sophomore with poor language skills finds those opportunities?
Yeah, I know Amber Robertson, Kedina Deller are really taking that into consideration as they're building these CLCs, and that is a reality, and I think it's really trying to figure out who are the employers or the organizations that are within the vicinity, closer, you know, closer to the schools, and then trying to match student interest with, you know, with the opportunities that we have as well.
And how we can help businesses do that comfortably?
Yes.
The other thing I would say too, Eric had talked to me a little while ago about it, is they do, Lauren McLean has worked with Amber and Eric around, because they have good language skills, it's just language skills in Spanish, but actually hiring interns that are English learners to tutor students that need extra time support who are also English learners. So I just want to make my pitch that we need, you know, we have 2,700 employees, we should be employing as many of our own students as we can, so, because they're so talented. But that's just an example of something we can do, is a sheltered internship where they're learning a skill, they're learning the, like, job skills, they're getting paid, and they're really serving a need in the, in the school system for their peers.
And the translators in training, that has started, so we're hopefully use those in our department for our community outreach opportunities, for our community information sessions.
Yeah, you say it again, it's translators in training, that's the name, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things you noted on your kind of to-dos for next year is a family engagement framework. Can you just talk a little bit more about that, and I mean, and what you're thinking, how that might?
We're using Karen Map's work, she's out of Harvard Education. There's very few family engagement frameworks out there. You know, the research shows that, you know, when families are engaged, students do better, staff does better, but there's not a But there's not a lot of how-tos. And Karen Map's work, it's called a dual-capacity model. In a nutshell, it's basically building capacity for schools to engage with families, doing equity audits, really diving deep to figure out how they can connect with their communities, but also what their communities need. At the same time, working with families in order to go from that back, you know, sitting in the backseat to actually being a partner in their students' education. So we're going to be leading, the framework is kind of housed in Beyond the Bake Cell, it's actually a book, and we're giving professional development this summer, and some of the PTOs and parent groups have reached out too, and they want to get involved in that. And the book is accessible by not only the school side, but also the family side as well. So that's going to be our plan moving forward.
Thank you.
I appreciate, okay, one comment, two comments. Procedurally, I saw in the thing that it says that there's going to be another update on June 8th, is that still accurate? On the agenda item online?
Talking about policies and...
Okay.
In the June, School Board.
Say that again, I can't hear you. Sorry?
I'm sorry. For the June School Board meeting, we will have policy updates and a report from the Diversity and Equity Committee.
Okay. So I really appreciated this presentation, and there's no one to blame except probably myself. In the future, it feels, the work that you guys are doing feels almost like it could be two different, it was like two different presentations, if that makes sense. It's like a presentation on CRT and a presentation on engagement. And I would almost like a deeper dive into each versus grouping them together. And I'm sorry if I don't understand the organizational structure that makes it so that y'all are grouped together, but I would have liked to see them separate, but I appreciate that we got them. I'm impressed with the work that both of you guys are doing, very, very impressed, so happy you're working for us and are on our team. For the CRT piece, just the same things I noted in our working session about, at some point wanting a deeper dive into the data around the effects that it's having in the schools that have a higher percentage of people receiving the CRT certification versus the other schools, but...
We agree. So I was really hoping to be able to give you like a small update of some of the questions that you asked about administrators and things like that. I know it felt separate. And spend some more time with some new things that we're doing in our department, but we are looking forward to being able to come back to give a little bit more information. Again, as we do more targeted practice around this work, because right now it's still been a lot of, I want to, so I will. I will name that of the 287 credentialed educators, 150 of those people got their credential just last year, so they're still novices to this work. So sometimes we need to give it a little bit of time to even, you know, take and have people really be able to practice and hone their skills. And with four equity specialists, it's a little bit difficult to be able to spend that time building capacity and continue building capacity. So we're looking forward to being able to share that data as well as it aligns to the way we target our instruction next year.
Okay, so from a very practical standpoint, if you were to do a deeper dive update, when would you want that? It would not be this year, you'd want a presentation next year where you're giving data-driven?
I would love to be able to share, again, sometime around this time next year about our data. And personally, I would love to have a work session time with you at some point next year so that we can really share a little bit more about what we do and really clarify how that looks and really answer more specific questions with the equity specialists who are really in buildings doing this work.
Okay, awesome.
One of my, sorry.
Nope.
I was going to say, one of my wonders for that session for next year is, to your point, it's going to take a while for these people kind of trained in kind of the credentials and the micro-credentials to kind of begin to make changes, differences in the schools. But I, just because you happen to be at the same time as the Gallup poll, I really wonder if next year we're going to see different school differences potentially for those schools that have a higher proportion of people who are credentialed.
Yeah, that would be really interesting to see. I also think there's a lot of interesting things happening across the division right now that's going to be working together to be able to change outcomes. I always tell people that culturally responsive teaching is not the thing that changes academic outcomes for students, it's one of the ingredients that you put into the cake to make it moist and wonderful. You know, if you're a great instructor and you're culturally responsive, then your students are all going to benefit. So you need to have all of the ingredients in order to make it work, and I have a feeling that we're going to see more and more how they're all, all the ingredients are coming together and aligning so that we can really get the results that we want out of students. And it may be a little bit of difficult to parse out specifically that it was because of this one thing, but you will probably see some significant changes between our Science of Reading program and the way we're really building fidelity around investigations in math and how we're working with teachers for culturally responsive teaching practice.
Love it. And then Eric, I just, great job. I'm so appreciative of the work that both of you, that's why it's hard, because it's like two different presentations, but also, great job. I've been to one of the magisterial district meetings, obviously, the community breakfasts are amazing and really thrilled with the work that you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, even though these presentations, you know, there's a lot of separation, we're continually working and helping each other behind the scenes as well, so it is kind of a...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just like it...
But the data points may, yeah.
It just seemed different, but I know you all are working together, and so thank you for sharing all the hard work that you're doing and bringing it to us. And I just wanted to make sure I'm getting, capturing whatever else you need to present to us, so it sounds like CRT, a deeper dive next year, community engagement next meeting, there's going to be a little bit more around that, or the...
Around the policy work. And the Diversity and Equity Committee will report.
Awesome. Are there any more questions? Dr. Haas?
Oh, no, I was just going to thank you. Beautiful work, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you all.
So that brings us to other business, and we are one minute and 11 seconds ahead of schedule. It's all right if we go over. Does anyone have other business that they'd like to discuss?
Oh, I just want to tell you that, remember how we had that, we brought in three school systems that were doing, you know, doing really great? One of them was York County, and we learned so much when they came back in January that Patrick set up a field trip for us tomorrow. So several of us are going down there in the morning, and they have set up a half-day of professional development on the things that they do in York County to get the results that they're getting. And we're going, we're bringing some principals, Patrick is driving his van, and so we'll all be down there the first half of the day, but we're looking forward to learning some more of the things that they do really well through their system.
I love it. It's awesome.
That's great.
I'm going to put in a little plug as chair to check out the School Board Working Docs. I will resend everyone the link. We have currently visited almost every school, and the school year is winding down, we are missing one school, PREP, Piedmont Regional Education Program. So if anyone wants to go and get a visit in there, it would make it so that every school was visited. Big shout out to our missing board member, Jono, he has pretty much filled in that chart, but that's good, that means that we're hitting our goals. And then the evaluations in that working document as well, so you can look and remind yourself of what we're going for. I think it's like two school visits at least each and a few other metrics. So that's all for me. Anybody else? I call this meeting adjourned. Nine-ten is when it was on the agenda.
I could go to PREP next week. I'll go to PREP next week.